I'd like to call this meeting of the February 20th Manhattan City Commission meeting to order. If you would join me in the flag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is a proclamation, and I'd like to invite those present for the America and the Military Saves Week to meet me at the microphone up front here. Janet Nichols. And Robin Burchett. Please join me.
If you'd like to join me, Janet?
Yeah. She knows the routine. Good evening. The proclamation this evening I'll begin. Whereas personal and household savings is fundamental to America's stability and vitality, and whereas adequate emergency savings, retirement funds, and safe debt income ratios are critical components of personal financial security, and America Saves and Military Saves are national marketing campaigns to persuade, encourage, and motivate Americans to take financial action in building wealth through saving money and reducing debt. And whereas America Saves and Military Saves campaigns are committed to encourage citizens, service members, and their families, and civilian employees to save money every month. Now therefore, I, Lynn Morse, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, do hereby proclaim the week of February 26th through March the 3rd, 2018, as America and Military Saves Week. And encourage citizens to set a personal savings goal, debt reduction goal, and make a savings plan, or take another positive wealth-building action during America and Military Saves Week, and pledge to sustain that action during the year. So I would present this proclamation. Yes? And if you'd like to say a few words, you're welcome to. Thank you very much. I don't know how to do that.
This is fine. I just appreciate that you take the time out for us to come and talk about the proclamation. Each year in February, Armed Forces Bank teams with the governments, and the military, and the schools to help promote savings. A lot of people aren't concerned with savings when they're younger, so by the time they get to be older, they're, they start to scramble, and by then, it's usually too late. So we do appreciate the time that, that you have taken for us to promote the proclamation. And I gave some cards to Mr. Fees, and they are, basically, they're pledge cards. It doesn't mean that you're signing up with an account or anything like that. It's just setting a goal for yourself to save. And you could be saving for emergency, you saving for a car, or just saving for a vacation. Whatever you're saving for, you want to make sure that you are saving. And there again, I thank you for taking the time for us to come in.
Do tell us who you are, where you're from.
I'm sorry.
You're Robin.
I'm Robin Burchett. I am with Armed Forces Bank. I actually work at the branch on post at Fort Riley. We also have another branch that is in Junction City. And if you ever need to come in, talk to us about it, we will be glad to hear from you. But if you don't save with Armed Forces Bank, please save with your own branch or other bank, okay? Thank you so much. Thank you.
And Janet Nichols with the Chamber of Commerce Military Affairs Office.
Thank you. I've for years seen Military Saves and America Saves programming on Fort Riley at town hall meetings for Fort Riley, so it's really a pleasure to come here to a city commission meeting here in Manhattan, because it really is a good program. It's not specific to any bank, it's a national program, and the military has supported it for a long time, so I'm happy to be a part of it. And I want to thank Robin and Mr. Brooks from Armed Forces Bank for getting in touch with me, and for the mayor, and for Gary Fees as well, for helping put this together. So thank you.
Fort Riley is so important to this region, and their partnerships that we work with, whether it's the bank there, or lots of other organizations. So I just want to stress how, what we do with K-State matters, and what we do with Fort Riley, and of course, everything, agriculture and the chamber and everything, they all matter. And those partnerships make a difference here. Thank you. The next, thank you, but all. The next item on the agenda is Commissioner comments. Commissioners.
Yeah, just real quick, I wanted, in light of the events that happened in Florida last week, I received a lot of questions from people on how the City of Manhattan can work to help make sure things like that don't happen here. And one thing that I just want to note is, a lot of this legislation would happen on the state and federal level, but something that I think is really important for us as a community to understand, if we ever really want to make a day in gun violence and mass shootings that happen in this country, is I want to commend the Manhattan Mercury for an editorial that they wrote last week. There's a lot of organizing that's happening around the country right now, there's a lot of organizing that's happening in Manhattan right now around this issue. And something that we all need to keep in mind, is that the reason we've made no progress on this is because we've allowed ourselves to become hyper-partisan. And at the end of the day, all of us want the same things. We want to be safe when we're out in public, we want our children to be safe when we send them to school, and none of us want to strip away civil liberties for other people. So if we can come, and over the next few weeks, have a conversation about these issues with those kind of mutual understandings, there's some really sensible things that I think we all can agree that we can act on, that we have allowed partnership to make us mess up until this point. I'm also requested a meeting with RCPD Director next week, because I want a better understanding of how we as a community can support them, in terms of when do we report things, what are the actions that RCPD can take to, again, help keep us safe. So I would just encourage you, over the next few weeks, be involved in the conversation, be involved in the conversation in a respectful way, so we don't miss the obvious. Thanks.
Yeah, sorry, I don't have a long list, usually have, I have a longer list of things to say during Commissioner comments. But I did want to commend RCPD. They had a banquet, as they do every year, they had an awards banquet on Sunday night. And it's always amazing to me how they put their life on the line every day for us, and we just take it for granted. There were a lot of wonderful winners, but there aren't really any losers. You can't, you know, really have one stand out more than the other, because all of them are quite credible and amazing in our, in our community. And we are quite, we are a safe community because of them. And as far as the Florida shootings go, I want to say, we think about spending money, everything requires funds, whether it's mental health issue, whether it's social workers, we need to hire more social workers issue, whether it's a gun issue, everything requires funds. And that's kind of where we're lacking. They have put in more funds into our schools, so that if you have to come to school now, you have to buzz in, even if the administrative assistants has known me for 20 years, I still have to buzz in, and she has to still see my face on that camera before she opens that door. Visitors have to sign in. We have all kinds of wonderful security, but we were able to find money for all of that, and people still want to do more things, more harm, so this is a bigger issue than we realize. But I do want to commend our law enforcement. They're always out there for us, and I think we're a safe community.
And just briefly to thank our folks in the city and in the county, most of you noticed we had a little bit of ice on the roads this morning, and a lot of folks got up very early in the morning to go out and see if they could deal with that. It's always difficult when you get the rain, because the things we normally do during a snow event don't work very well, but commend them for doing that. And Rob, I think we still have enough salt for the future, so it's not over, but we did a, I think they did a great job this morning. We've also got a cleanup campaign coming on the 2nd to the 6th of April. This is only one day off of what we did last year, so for all of those who are cleaning up yards and doing those kinds of things around your house, you know, you just drag that stuff out to the curb, and the city comes by and picks it up, and they've got quadrants, as you go around the city, one day kind of per quadrant. But the city's always been very good in the past about going back and picking up things that were maybe too big on the first day, or people weren't home on the first day, or so on. So I might mention that we've also got a campaign that's being done privately, and that is to take the month of April and try to help those who need help, with volunteers who have the ability to help, to do a little cleaning up, both in the neighborhoods and in some of the downtown areas that could use some sprucing up. So the idea here, the campaign's called Polish the Apple, and the idea is to take one month at a time and really make the place sparkle, make a difference across the entire city. More to follow on that one.
Thank you very much, and thank you to the city crews for the work that they did last night. It was just like presto, and it happened, so I know a lot of work went into it, because it was snowing, sleeting, thunder snow, or something. But yet, by morning, the roads, at least the main streets, were passable, and not that dangerous. So thank you very much to all of you, and the police, and... So, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. And that those are items of routine or housekeeping nature, and those, or those items that have been reviewed by the commission in the past, any commissioner may request an item be removed to the end of the general agenda. Does the commission have any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion?
Mayor, do you want me to comment on the?
Yes, please.
Temp note bids? So we did have a temp note, temporary note, which is our construction loan, essentially, for the City of Manhattan on projects, so we had four bidders today on that. The low bid was submitted by Country Club Bank, at a true interest cost of 1.85%, which is up about 29 basis points from a year ago, but still a very, very good rate, and that is for three capital projects. One is $645,000 for the Old Big Blue River Stormwater Project, $1.6 million for the city's share of the Dennison Avenue and Marlet Avenue Improvement Project, and the $1 million loan that we're providing for the Housing Authority, and replacing the windows and sanitary sewer improvements at the high-rise.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there public, does the public wish to comment on the, anything on the consent agenda? There are quite a few items, actually. So, seeing no one, I'll close the public comments. Is there a motion from the commission?
Move that we accept the consent agenda.
A second.
There's a motion and a second. Would the city clerk call the roll?
Mayor Morse.
Yes.
Commissioner Dodson.
Yes.
Commissioner Ready.
Yes.
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner McGee.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
We're racing right along. At this point, it's the general agenda, and the first item on the agenda is to consider a task order number three for the design of Manhattan Regional Airport Terminal Parking Lot Improvements. The presenter is Jesse Romo, Airport Director. And, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I'll just jump right into it. We've had discussion on airport parking for the last few years, and just starting from November of '16, we met and discussed in a work session, or excuse me, in the Airport Advisory Board prior to the work session, and looked at several different options of what we can do for parking improvements to the airport. After that time, we had some priorities come up, especially in airport security that took precedent, so we kind of moved this to the back burner. But since we have, the dust has settled on those efforts, and we've had record deployments, more people are flying to Manhattan than ever before, and we've got the larger jets going to Dallas and coming back here shortly, it's a great time to look at airport parking again. And we also had a joint meeting with the Airport Advisory Board and City Commission at the airport on November 1st of '17. Parking planning actually started well before that. There was a parking forecast from the terminal area master plan that I've included here. This was back when planning for the terminal began, and justification for the large terminal came with more deployments and more traffic, and there was a recognized need for additional parking. And then the forecast showed we would need about 648 stalls in 2015, and by 2030, we'd need 800, over 800. Right now, this is a shot of our parking lots, and we have in total 650 stalls, so we're right in line with what the forecast was for 2015. But these 650 stalls do include the rental car lots that we have that are under part of the contracts with the rental car companies, as well as designated employee parking areas. So for customer parking, it's roughly 540 some odd parking stalls. And those are rough estimates, because we have quite a few gravel lot areas, and you can only estimate how people are going to park next to each other in gravel lots. And speaking of the capacity, we have issues over the holidays. This picture is taken a couple days after Christmas. We had quite a few creative parking by our customers all over the place. You can't really tell in the left picture, because it's covered by snow so much, but a lot of the cars there are parked in the grassy areas, and parked along ditches. And the smaller pictures to the right, you can see that one of the trucks there parked pretty close to the culvert. But people were finding whatever parking they could to leave their vehicle in order to make their flights. And this is indicative of the capacity issue we have, that was caused by one additional charter operation that occurred. There was one charter flight for the Athletics, the boosters in France that went as part of the bowl game. And if we ever want to expand our air service at the airport, we can expect to see additional parking capacity issues. The way the parking lot actually looks, once that's all thawed out, is like this. This was taken just a week ago. The center gravel lot is washing off quite a bit. It's, we've had a lot of erosion. What the pictures don't show are the ruts that are also being created, and in the center of the lot, there's a drainage area there, and there's quite a few deep ruts. As you're walking through that lot, that center lot, and looking from the other side, you can see the wash off still occurs. And we've got, it was always designed to be temporary for about three years worth of time, and I think it's been closer to six now. We've got temporary barricades there that are set up to help delineate how people should park, but those are easily moved by folks when they want to park where they want to Walking beyond that lot, this is a look at our newest gravel lot on the right, and then to the left is the open space that we still have available, where we're looking to potentially fill and put in a new gravel lot there. The asphalt section of our parking needs quite a bit of repair. You can see from the pictures there, there is, I think, and Mark Becham from Olson Associates is here with us today, and he might want to speak to some of this too, but there's well over 30 to 35% complete failure of the asphalt. When it was originally laid, it was laid at about two, two and a quarter inch depth. It was anticipated that we'd have an overlay project come shortly after, but that never occurred. And so it's a pretty thin layer of asphalt, and you can see the lips from the concrete around the islands that are there, there's a significant lip. So vehicles hit those lips and crack them all the time, and then you can see how much water and ice is getting into those little potholes, and that's going straight down past the depth of the asphalt itself. One of the other issues we have, there's two here, I have one circled, but I want to talk about the first one. This is a look from the newest gravel section that we have adjacent to the long section along the ditch of the parking lot. And you can see the curb that was established there, and that was part of the original design for that parking lot quite a few years back. There's quite a bit of erosion that occurred. When we put in the gravel, we brought the level up as much as possible, and make sure that that curbed didn't erode. And we wanted to make sure that we had plenty of lighting for trip and fall hazards in that area. But we don't have any lighting solutions to really backlight that space, so what we did, and that's where this circled area is, and you see the zoomed in picture to the left, we added some halogens, spotlights to the top of the light fixtures. So it's not a true light fixture, it is a Band-Aid fix to help illuminate some of that section. On the other side of the airport, we spun a couple of the military ramp lights over to help light up the other half of the parking lot as well. Now, I mentioned we do have needs, and this has been looked at quite a bit. The original design effort was done by meeting Hunt with Olson Associates a few years back, and it came out with $7.2 million in order to get 935 stalls. That included removing the ditch, relocating the permanent fence that we have, as well as an interior road, and would have moved closer to our crosswind runway. Those are all things that added to significant costs of the project, and we wanted to look at options to utilize the footprint and the existing loop road system. So we brought forward a couple different looks at it. This one is a 4.9 million option, and 968 stalls, and this one is about 4.5, at 780-ish stalls. The difference is the lower left corner here, the southwest corner, would not be paved out. Now I say roughly 781 stalls, because there would actually be additional parking realized from the gravel lot, but again, that is roughly estimated, how much we can actually get out of that. So we would get a little bit over 800 stalls, or parking spaces. But we wanted to refine this plan even further down, and try and figure out if we tackle this piecemeal, what are some of the biggest, most critical components that we have to address first? And so the way Olson Associates has taken a look at this design effort, is to base it off that total 4.5 million, but really highlight the areas that we need the most work, and that includes the center oval lot, and repaving and striping, creating new ADA stalls and access, as well as a new drop-off for trucks, and potential, if you have ATA coming with a stop, that could utilize a space over there as well. It would remove and replace the asphalt, and redo a lot of the drainage work out here. It would design out the future construction of the newest gravel lot that we did in 2015, but not complete it. And it would also include gravelling out and filling that last bit of space that I had shown you earlier. So if we look at the highlights of those things, we're anticipating that's about 3.28 million worth of construction off that total design effort. Looking at financing part of this, we wanted to assume a few different options, a 10, 15, and 20-year bond, and what would it be the debt service to us for that? And you can see from 10 to 20 years, go from $550,000 to $333,000 per year approximately. And then we did some assumptions on what we could expect in revenue, and these assumptions are based off of parking stall counts that the airport staff has done on a daily basis to look at how many open stalls we have, and try to create some level of demand model from that. We adjusted for anticipating behavioral change, as well as adjusting it for expecting some non-revenue customers from people who just come in and pick up and drop off quickly to rent a car, folks. So there's some adjustments in there, but it's really rough estimates, and if we charge a flat daily parking rate, we can anticipate collecting at about $4, $463,000, which I think the point we're trying to make is that we want to make sure if we do charge a fee that is in a reasonable amount, and it's enough to cover our debt service. An actual pro forma study would be done by Walker through the design contract with Olson to be a little bit more scientific in this, and anticipating how much we can charge people, how much revenue we can expect, and how much behavioral change we could also expect. Other airports in the area, Wichita charges for their parking, they have both close-in parking in their garage lot, and then they have parking right options off to the distance. Kansas City, I think most people are familiar, it's economy lots that have to be shuttled in with a 750 daily rate. There's other airports too, smaller regional airports, and I've been asked this question before, what are comparable airports doing? From Stillwater, Columbia, to a few of the airports around Kansas, they all have free parking. But when you start looking at airports that are a little bit more successful in their air service, Lincoln, Omaha, they charge for their parking. Abilene, Texas, Chippewa Valley, Rockford, all these airports, regional airports are approximately our size, charge for parking. Same out in Michigan and Oklahoma. The scope of services, we shared a copy with the Airport Advisory Board, they reviewed it in, at the last meeting that we had last week. We had some more discussions on it, and they voiced their support for making parking improvements at the airport. From their words, that we had some eyesores, we had some safety concerns, and it was due for some upgrades and improvements. So they would like to see us move forward. Back to financing. The total estimated cost for the temporary lots and the lot expansion is about $4.5 million, which includes the construction contingencies, designs, the temporary note financing costs, and bonding costs. And we have spent about $114,000 on the temporary lots that we did in November of '15. We anticipate that we'll have funding with the bond issuance, and then having parking revenue from the parking operation cover the debt service, so it'll be by user fee. And in order to issue the bonds, a project authorization has to be approved. If moved forward, city administration has discussed temporary note financing, the project and installing revenue control systems, but not charging for a period of time. So in other words, we expect to install everything and have it all ready in place, but while we benefit from the temporary notes, we won't charge people quite yet, but implement those fees in about three years from now. And we recommend moving forward on this project and executing task order number three. Any questions?
I have a couple questions. The Airport Advisory Board, did they specify which, and I might have been in my notes, so I'm sorry if I, I'm just forgetting it right now, did they specify whether they were recommending the one 4.9 or the 4.5 million?
At the time that we presented the 4.9 and 4.5 was prior to a meeting with City Commission, and their original support was for 4.9.
Okay. And to correct me if I'm wrong, the only difference between the two is that one of the lots doesn't get paved, correct?
Correct.
Is that something that we could go back at a later date and do a notch? Because right now, between the two plans, there's about $1,000-ish stall difference, like per stall difference. So would it be more, if we decide to do the 4.5 billion, then decide to go back at a later date to pave that area, would, would it be a higher cost, because we waited to do it, instead of just all doing it at the same time? Sorry, that was a very convoluted question.
And I'll have Mark respond to it, to portions of this, but I'll just also add that the per stall cost may be a little off, if you're not including anticipated gravel lot parking as well.
Got it.
And so the stall count is based off of mark, actual mark stalls.
Okay.
Good evening, Mark Bashamp with Olson Associates. And the design contract is to design it, and then bid, we have a base bid, and let me use the pointer. Let me, the sheet that has, let me open that up. We have essentially worked up in our contract to where this is base bid, this is alternate one, this is alternate two. So when we come back to you at bid opening, we can turn around and select which ones that you want to bid.
Got it.
We're going to be designing all of this.
We have.
You have, there you go, there you go. Okay. Base, one, two, and then there.
Got it, that makes sense.
So it'll be, it'll be designed, it'll be, whatever you choose to do now, or in the future, it'll be designed, you just have to dust off the plans and put them back out there. But construction cost will go up.
Got it. Okay. And then last question, and this is probably a better question for you. As we move forward, and especially when we start to try to decide what the parking fee should be, I reached out to a few people that I know from Manhattan that frequently fly out of Manhattan, and I asked them about the parking fee, and obviously, they weren't happy with it, but I was like, I know you're not happy with it, but would it change your behavior? And all of them said yes, that they would, if there is a parking fee at the airport, that they would either be much more likely to fly out of another airport, Kansas City, or, and which is crazy to me, because it's $3 a day, or they would take a ride-sharing service out to the airport, which obviously could manipulate some of our revenue totals. So one of the things that I would want to know, and I know you briefly touched on this in another commission meeting, is how many people flying out of Manhattan are flying from a 6502 ZIP code that could potentially, their behavior change and take a ride-sharing service, versus people who are coming in out of town, who are going to pay for parking?
I don't have the percentages of, is that one not on? That one was on?
It is.
It's just my ears. It's just my ears. I don't have the percentages on the zip codes with me, but
That's okay.
The majority of traffic does come from Manhattan and Junction City, Fort Riley. And so that area and then we kind of pick up a lot of pieces from the region. But the subconsul in Walker would be the ones working on the pro forma to actually show us what kind of behavioral change we can expect. We've also partnered with the CBB in the past and have done surveys and, you know, obviously some of this is skewed by the way you asked the question, because if you asked, do you want this for free or do you want to pay for it, and people are going to say, I'd rather have it for free.
Absolutely.
We went back and asked, well, how much would you be willing to pay if we had to charge? And so then there was some level of acceptance of if we had to pay as long as it was a small level, a small amount. But from the anecdotal information you have, I mean, we probably can anticipate some people would take that into consideration. I would encourage folks to go to flymhk.com's website and use that travel calculator because you would show the cost differential holistic, including the parking, not only here if we implemented it, but also what you would charge or pay at Kansas City.
I'm less concerned, I'm less concerned about the Kansas City part, I'll call your bluff on that, but the ride sharing service was something that I thought was interesting that I hadn't really thought of before. Because it is right, if I knew I had to pay for parking at MHK, I would probably keep my car at home where it wasn't exposed to the elements and just pay $15 to take an Uber out to the airport, rather than paying the fee and then also having my car in an open lot. So it's just, I figured you wouldn't have the statistics in front of you, it's just something I want us to keep in mind as we move forward.
Commissioner, one thing that Jesse has talked about before, if we do do a revenue control system, we have talked about Uber a little bit, transportation network companies such as Lyft, Wichita charges Uber and Lyft drivers to go into their airport and drop people off. So those companies do pay a fee and it is possible for us to recoup some revenue for them, there's models out there we could look at. So something to keep in mind, yeah, you'd probably lose some revenue still, I'm not sure, I'm not entirely sure how that would even out, but there is ways to get revenue off of those network companies that are going to be ride sharing, dropping off and leaving.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm still not quite clear on the difference between the 4.5 and the 3.28. Can you explain that to me?
Let's, are you going back?
So next slide, back.
Okay, the 4.5 builds this, this, and this.
I lost your pointer.
Okay, sorry. This here finishes that, builds this, and builds this.
All right.
With concrete.
Yep.
And grabbles, yeah.
And then gravel that. The 3.28 only does this and this. And then fills this.
So the difference
This stays millings. Essentially then, all of this, I lost the mouse, there it is, this would be, this would remain all millings.
And is that northern piece marked?
This.
Yeah.
As best as what they can.
Okay, because it shows stalls in there, so that's
Well, no, I mean, we laid it out based on how it would work, because we're going to design it, but not build it, unless you choose as an alternate to build it.
Yeah. Well, my, I guess my inclination is I'd rather have the 4.9 design, because you save, again, it has to do with getting everybody on site and doing the same, all the thing at the same time, but it reduces your cost by about 17% per stall. But the other one was, and Commissioner McKee noted this, that if you expect a behavioral change, then what that would mean is perhaps you don't need as many stalls in the future as you thought you might, even if we have growth in the airport. So a sequential development of the parking lot may make more sense. So that's why I think in the beginning, we came down to the 4.5 option or maybe the 3 point, whatever that
3.2.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because then it allows you to see what the drop-off might be based upon people's resistance to parking charges or whatever it is. But it'll take you a long time, because if we don't, we don't plan to collect anything for three years, then that means you don't get construction of a new piece for three years, because you won't know the answer to that question. Now, the anticipated growth, I mean, when you look at what we've done with the airport so far, so we said we had grown employment, employment, so now we're up to, what, 66,000, is it?
Correct.
This last year? And if that trend kind of continues, then we can kind of forecast without any of these other indications what the, what the amount of parking space required might be, right? So, and then if you added another route, my assumption is that would be additive to the current calculation. In other words, you've, people want to go to Denver, those would be a different set of people than the people that are going to Dallas and Chicago, by some percentage anyway. So that's where you'd get your forecast for growth. Is there some other factor in growth that I'm missing there or is that, is that what you've done on the right-hand column?
That's what me and Hunt had looked at during the terminal master planning and the parking master plan, so, yeah, and that's where the forecast needs for 2030 coincides with the forecast and employment levels in
Right.
Future air service at Manhattan.
Okay, thanks.
I have a few questions. I have several questions, some might be easier than others. But when I'm looking at the phases that are laid out in the documents that we got, phase 10 says financial revenue and projections for paid parking. Shouldn't that be phase one?
I think it can be.
It can be, that is just how it, just how I laid it out. Those phases don't mean in any particular order.
If we're going to do any kind of scientific study on projections for what people would pay, I want to know that first, before I move forward with any of this. But as far as cutting costs, you know, the claim is always 4.5 million or 2 point some odd, 3 point some odd million. So when I see something like 4.2, you said 60% to 100%, can it be 30 or 50? Are we going to save a little bit of money if it's at 30% or 50%? Does it have to be at 60%? Because when we've had other designs done before, they, we didn't say they had to be at 60% or anything of that sort, so I wasn't sure.
Well, as far as the review, the review sets,
Yeah.
It's just a matter of at different stages of design, we'll meet with city staff and, and I mean, more than likely, we'll have it, we'll better have it all ironed out by 30%. As to, the biggest thing for us to look at is where is revenue control best placed? And we have not looked at that. And that's, and that's part of what will come out of our design concept with Walker Parking. You know, we show it, we show it right here. Well, maybe it's best if it's placed someplace else. And they're the experts at the revenue
Yeah, I think that's the first thing that needs to be done, so that was one
Well, that's part of the design process that we'll do upfront.
So just a few things that I want to look at, because nobody's denying that the parking lot needs improvement. I don't think you would have that from me, I certainly do believe it needs improvement. So it's just the cost and where we, where can we save our taxpayers a little bit of money? So when we talk about security cameras and mounted on poles, are we talking about staff time? Is somebody going to be looking at those security, whatever is on the security cameras? Do we need staff time for that? Do we need, I don't know, where do they store it? Do you need to store whatever is being recorded? Is there a cost for that? Those are things when I think about a security camera, otherwise it doesn't really serve a purpose just to have a camera.
It would not include any, or need any additional staff time for a review of the cameras.
So what would be the purpose then? You just have a camera and it's footage in case something happens?
Yes.
Okay. So where do you store that? Do we need a, because RCPD, when they do any kind of body cameras, any kind of cameras, they always need space to store any of that, because it's not gone immediately, they don't get rid of it. Is this something that needs storage space?
I think part of the issue with that, Commissioner, is RCPD has a lot of regulations where they have to hold on to things for a long, long time. We don't have to hold on to parking lot video for a long, long time. So if somebody gets their car broken into or something out in the parking lot and they want to come back four months later, we're probably not going to have that video any longer. So we'll keep it around if someone wants to say, okay, I was gone for a week and somebody broke in, then we would be able to take a look at that and do that. So the storage space is not going to be as much of an issue, because we don't have to maintain that video. Like some cases will go on for a long, long time and some of that record and evidence, some of that stuff that RCPD was dealing with is long-term storage, what are you going to do with that?
Because even when we have cameras on our traffic signals, we have somebody watching it in the transportation center or whatever our little housing thing is called over there.
Not necessarily. And we have the capability to have somebody watching it all the time.
Because it's going on and I see
We're not staffed at that level now, but we do have security personnel that we added, so this would just be adding a screen for them to observe. So, you know, I would argue by that security will make feel, people feel better about driving and leaving it at the airport, so that it is under observation versus not having that.
Even though we don't have it now?
Right, we don't have it now. So it's the ability to have that and it's not putting any really additional labor burden on us, because we already have security staff looking at other security cameras.
I'm just thinking of ways where we need to save if we don't have something there now.
And this does all tie into our current system, so it's not additional need and as Kyle mentioned, we have protocols in place of how long we keep storage on, on all that, so.
Okay. So, you know, we talk about the parking lot being full. I want to know how often is it full to the max? Because we go, we use the airport and we always find a parking spot somewhere, except for the bowl, bowl weekend, when everybody leaves at the same time, but that happens once a year and maybe there's two or three events a year when it's packed. But is it packed many times where we need 700 and some odd stalls?
Well, under current demand right now, we have that one time a year, as you just mentioned, it's right around Christmas time and the bowl game happens, then we're beyond capacity. And so we're beyond full. When you're talking about full, it's kind of a relative term, because we haven't had every single stall filled, but people perceive that to be full and therefore will park creatively in a ditch to be close to the terminal instead of parking way in the corner. And so it, it's seasonal around, spring break is our high point, another one is May at the end of the semester, Thanksgiving, and then we have the last peak around Christmas. And so we have seasonal peaks and valleys.
So my only thinking is that we need to do the, a scientific method about behavior change, because 10% and 10% for this and just 20% change, a fluke of picking a number on some
That's part of the pro forma, we'll dive into that, because there's no better information than what Jesse has provided you. And as part of, as part of the project and when, when Andrew was in for the Aggieville study, we said and talked about, how do we count the cars? How do we know, you know, how long cars are staying there? Well, originally in our, and it still is in our budget, for 10 days, we're going to actually count cars and determine how long those cars stay. We talked about, is there methods we can do electronically with cameras, but the cost was, was more to do that than it was to do it by, by hand to do that. So we saved some costs there. And that will determine, do you have somebody staying there two days, 10 days, or is that a car that's parked there for two months? I mean, we'll be able to determine that with that.
The reason I'm asking for a more scientific method is because the reason people use the Manhattan Regional Airport is about 15, 20 some minute away from home. So if they're going to leave now and they have to pay for 10 days of parking, they're going to find somebody else to drop them off. Right now, our current behavior is because it's free, don't worry honey, I'll leave my car there. But if it's not free, then they'll have somebody drop them off or call somebody. So I don't know if we can just check it with some random stat, I don't know what would be a way to tap into that, because it is such a short distance from the airport to my house, it's easy to drop them off. I don't think anybody would leave their car for two months or 10 days if, if there's a parking fee of $5 a day or $7 a day or anything. I'm thinking the maximum people would pay from just talking to everybody all around me, because this issue was coming up, was $3 a day maximum. And they said even that, because it's about 300 some odd dollars to leave out of Manhattan, whether you're going to Dallas or Chicago. It's rarely less than 300 and almost often it's 350. So it's going to matter, the little things matter, they're not going to leave their cars. So I don't know how you tap into that. And ultimately, we're going to pick up the tab.
Yeah, when you do that study, it's probably useful, just the example that Commissioner Reddy gave, if you stay here for 10 days, let's say it's $5 a day, that's $50. And if you go to Kansas City, having done this several times, it's about 260 miles, I think, round trip, at 55 cents a mile, which is the government rate. So that costs you $130 or somebody, maybe not cost that much. But those kinds of facts would probably be pretty helpful when we finally consider what you present after you've done the, maybe even the 30%, but certainly by the 60% design.
Well, I think it's our intention to, to want to run with that pro forma as quick as we, if we can to get that, we're not going to, we're not going to wait to do that at the end. I mean, everybody's agreed, I think we've talked, is that pro forma will want to get started right away.
So I don't know how much it costs to do some kind of a scientific study, but I hope we don't have to hire somebody who charges hundreds of thousands of dollars. I hope we can look into somebody at K-State who does some kind of studies, I don't know, but I just want to get an accurate number.
Well, Walker has, I think a lot of the airports that, that was talked about is a lot of what Walker has done. They have institutional knowledge of what they have converted from free to charging, what, if there's a loss, you know, so there's statistical information that they have, that they've worked from other airports, that they'll bring to the table for us. You know, the other thing is, you know, you're going to increase the drop-offs and so forth. Yeah, you will, you know, and what is that number? And they'll come up with that number in order to come up with a revenue generation to present to you.
We're also updating our air service study, which is looking at folks who fly out of, by zip code, out of this region that fly here and go to Kansas City or Wichita or Lincoln or wherever, and we'll have that zip code data. So we can make some assumptions that 66502 and 03 and may lose X amount. We don't know necessarily, we know where they're going, we don't know necessarily how long they're away, but those are some of those components that we'll have that will be solid data.
And the city is doing that or Olson will
We're doing that now
You're doing
For another purpose.
In that study
Because we wanted it?
Well, no, we want it because we're trying to attract another airline, so.
I was want, is there a way in that study, and maybe this is something Olson would do instead, to see how much of the travel from Manhattan is for business purposes versus personal? Because that's, like, if my business was paying for me to fly out of Manhattan, then I'm probably still, I don't care about paying for parking. That's terrible to say, hopefully Senator Pluses isn't watching this right now. But that's, that's another aspect. If it's a lot of business travel, then maybe the behavior changes wouldn't be as substantial as we think they would be.
That's what Andrew mentioned to us when we met. He goes, the business traveler is not going to change their habit.
Well, the, I think it's two years ago when, what's her name, Travel came to see us. We did a survey out there, so that data is probably still fairly rubble, but percentage business travels, pleasure travelers, visiting KSU, et cetera. So we've got a lot of that data already.
I think a large number of the people that travel from our airport are military or related to the military also. And I'd like to know that, try to figure out what that percentage is. I think it's, it would give us good information to talk with Fort Riley and just be able to know, even though there are only two in uniform on a flight, that doesn't mean that there aren't others connected to the military that are also flying. Certainly, I think it's close to half, but I don't know that from any credible source, so. I have been interested, you're not through yet, you should, maybe you should go ahead and finish your questions. Now, I did email Colonel Lawrence about this, and he mentioned that they have a lot of Fort Riley leaving from even Salina and Topeka. And, you know, they use Manhattan as well, but it's not overwhelmingly just Manhattan. They use all three. So I just want us to be clear on how we're... It's how we're going to get the revenue to pay for this. That's the painful part. Otherwise, nobody's going to disagree. We need to do more stuff and make it better and all of this. But I just, we really need to do that study. $2, $3, maybe maximum $4. I don't think anybody's going to pay $5 or more. I really don't. I think people are just going to have somebody drop them off. Everybody knows somebody in Manhattan. That's who they use. Businesses, I can understand, but every time Brian and I go on flights these days out of Manhattan, we know fewer and fewer people. That means there are more people that are not affiliated either with the K-State or in our circles, in our government agencies that are using it. There are more personal trips that are being made. So they're the ones who are probably going to be, you know, we need to look into that.
Earlier this evening in the consent agenda, we approved hiring a company to do a pavement management study. And is that something that would be appropriate for this? Or is that wrapped up in what you're going to be doing, Mark?
We'll be doing that.
An analysis?
This area here, it's either tear out what's bad and replace it. You have a lot of subgrade issues because moisture has gotten into that subgrade, and we'll be having to fix that. And so it's pretty obvious where, what we have to do. And my estimate, several years ago, said there was 30% that had to be replaced. And I know that in this one, I've upped it to 35. And every longer we wait, the more it's going to get, the pavement that we're going to be replacing before we can put the top coat on top of it. We will be going in through here around the loop. There is some deterioration on some joints, and we'll be fixing those as well with the project.
So this first phase for $434,000 is just to develop your recommendations?
No, it's designed, it's the design, ready to go out to bid.
Yeah.
With this complete project right here, and you choose as to how much you want to do. And we'll bring that to you in kind of a line item amount for base bid, alternate one, alternate two, and if there's alternate three, or however it plays out when we get done, and it's out to bid, then you'll be able to choose how much you want to do based on your revenue projections that are being completed with this project.
Are there other questions from the commission? Okay. That being said, are there questions from the public? Is there someone here interested in speaking to the airport parking lot? If you'd come forward. Seeing no one come forward, we'll move on with the commission discussion.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on that. You know, the main thing for me is, you know, because Commissioner Reddy was talking about cost, clearly, this is going to be user fees. You know, cost to taxpayer, it's going to be user fees. So if you fix the parking lot, you're going to have paid parking. So if we approve this, we're going to have paid parking in some form because we shouldn't be paying for it, the taxpayer. So, and we temp note it because you don't want to charge people for parking in a mud hole, and you've got to have it done. So the parking fees have got to cover the temp notes and the long-term, you know, bonding on it, which I wouldn't make it past 15 years, you know, 10 or 15. So, you know, based on the numbers that have been in the packet, we're going to end up charging between $4 and $6. And that's going to change some behavior, and I'm not sure I trust any surveys or estimates on what the behavior is going to be with actually seeing it. So I'm for, you know, the 3.28 million and doing this sequentially, simply because that's just a big unknown. I don't care who surveys it, you may or may not get it right on, you know, getting the behavior. So that's sort of where I'm at.
3.28?
Yes, that would sequence it. It wouldn't do all that at once. You would end up doing that purple area there first and the blue, and that's it. And the rest would stay gravel. And then you could get an idea of what's going on. And yes, the cost may go up if you don't pay for it all now. But I just think there's a big risk there because you could end up with a large number of people, you know, that simply use Uber to get there, which, you know, I like the idea, so we charge Uber a couple dollars to drop people off, and they help fund it. But to me, that's what all this tells me, you know, wading through all of it, that that's the route approach I would take.
I have similar concerns. The main thing moving forward that I would just really, I want the commission to think about is whatever plan that we pick, it's 100% right that our revenue estimates are just that, they're estimates. We won't really know what people's change in behavior is until we actually do it. So I would want us, no matter what one that we pick, to have an agreed-upon plan on if the revenue fell under what our payments were, where that would come from. Because I don't want to be in a position where three years from now, revenue is lower from the parking fees than what we thought, and then we're having a fight over where that comes out of the general fund to make up that difference. So I would rather us just agree upfront, if the revenue falls short, to have a contingency plan of either we raise fees or it comes out of this X fund. Because I would hate for, I feel like we have the same debate about things like ATA and social services every single year, and that's where I fear if this ever fell short, that's where that funding would come from, which would be, I just don't think that's the direction we want to go. So I would want us to have a contingency plan, a part of this on what we would do.
I'm a little hesitant as far as the fee structure act. I mean, I know Gary's going to call out our name, and we've got to figure out whether we're going to go yes or no on this. But if we go with $4, I mean, you're looking at $463,000. That's if all things go well. And most of the things we do is we project on the, we want to say conservative side, but not conservative enough. Otherwise, we will end up picking up that tab, and I have a feeling it's going to be quite a bit. I'm just uncomfortable because I just need more information about how people will pay on this.
Yeah, I guess I'd just go back to what we're trying to decide. We're only trying to decide tonight on two things, the design contract and the authorization to issue revenue bonds. So when they come back, as was stated, they're going to have a developed plan, let's say they're at the 30% design level, and they will have a base plan and then a 1, 2, 3. And we'll know what each of those 1, 2, 3s costs on top of that base plan. At that time, we will also have that information that, as best as we can determine, what the impact is from parking fees versus driving people to other behaviors. And I think there are a lot of remedies, and I understand what Commissioner McKee is getting at, but I also understand that, you know, we have, once you issue the revenue bonds and get that stuck, that's pretty well stuck. But then you also have the ability to change your parking fee if that's required. You've got a lot of options, so it depends on kind of what parking fee we start out with. If we just barely cover it at $4, then we're taking more risks than if you start out at $5. So I'm in support, and I'm ready to read a motion.
Well, I've been waiting for your discussion, but I am less inclined... Excuse me. I am less inclined to approve. In order for the revenue to come out, it would have to be $4 a day or $5 if you build in the contingency for the what-if revenues fall under, because the $4 just barely makes the revenue requirement. I'm just certain that we'll be involved, you'll be back here soon with regard to the runway that we have to rebuild. I don't know, how soon is that, Jesse, that you're going to be coming with that?
Construction would be 2020.
2020? And so we don't have to do the design soon?
The way that's scheduled in the capital planning is 28, federal fiscal year 2018, we have planning underway. 2019, we have the design, and then 2020 and 2021 would be two phases of construction, and that would be covered at a 90% grant from the FAA.
Okay. That's good news, 90%, unless it isn't. Yeah, never know. Anyway, I would have been a lot more confident if Salina hadn't just started an air service to Chicago with a, that would erode some of our ridership here. I'd also like to have the commission consider dividing this motion. It does not have to be both of them. There's an "and" in there. So we could, one is to execute task order number three for design, and the other one is to approve a resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds to finance the terminal, the whole project. And so you're under the gun to establish an amount in order to proceed with the project if you're going to do general obligation bonds. Anyway.
So clarification, I'll try and clarify that. So traditionally, what we do is we have a capital project, we authorize, we're not approving, we're authorizing the bonds to be issued if you ultimately have a project. Minimum, and that's why the full amount's in there for four and a half million, assuming there'll be a project that's up to four and a half million. If you want to change that amount, we need at least enough bonds to cover the design fee and that temporary cost we got in there. So that's about $525,000. So if you're not comfortable authorizing the four and a half million, then we could do a lesser amount. But we don't have any cash to pay for the design, so we need some temp notes, and that's what this authorizes.
I'm, you know, Lynn is always talking about want versus needs, and some of this I look at as want. It seems to me that if we, the need part is that part of the parking lot that is asphalt millings and really is a substandard parking lot as opposed to the one that at least is serviceable for now, I think we have a good street department that can repair some of the things that have happened at the parking lot at the airport. And so I'd like for us to develop a total strategy. One of the things we've been, I've been asking for since the first time the airport parking lot proposal came was information about who's flying out of our airport, and we keep not getting that information. And it's not, I know it's hard to get. You've explained that well. But it is still part of, why do we need this versus just want to do it? And so I am, I can support the design, but I don't, I'm not, at this point, interested in committing to the millions of dollars that it's going to take for bonding. Or, quite frankly, the big hurdle for me is causing our citizens to have to pay the parking fee. I think that is a real draw at our airport that gets people to fly from here, and I want to keep that magic happening rather than kind of a penalty for flying. Salina doesn't charge, you know, it's just people make choices with their feet in this case, and so I just needed to explain. Thank you.
I move we authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute task order number three with Olson Associates of Manhattan, Kansas, in the amount of $410,474 for the design of the Manhattan Regional Airport Terminal Parking Lot and approve resolution number 022018B authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds to finance the Manhattan Regional Airport Terminal Parking Lot Project AP 1801.
Is there a second?
I have a question.
I'll second.
For the general obligation bonds, so when we do that, is that for the 3 point, you said $4.5 million? Can we change that?
So this isn't obligating you to issue those bonds. You're just authorizing. It starts the process for us to put the construction loan in place. But if you're not comfortable doing that, we can just do, we'll have to come back and amend those bonds or issue more bonds later. So it's doable. So, you know, I would go $550,000 to cover design and that temporary, that 100 and some thousand we've got cost today. If that's, if you don't want to go, again, you're just authorizing the bonds, issuing the bonds, and awarding a project comes, well, you issue the bonds after you award the project and determine what that permanent financing is going to be.
Yeah.
All this does is it commits $410,000. That's it. The rest of it is there as a contingency based on what they come back with, and it's administratively easier to do it that way.
I thought it was 500 and some thousand.
There's a...
110,000.
Of existing expenses that we'd like to cover now, or just carrying it in a project account that it needs to be paid off.
We have a...
As part of our temp notes.
Motion and a second.
Right. But we are in discussion. After a motion and a second, the commission is certainly, we are interested in discussion before we vote. So if you're ready for the vote, if you wanted your question answered about, okay, all right. Okay. Would the city clerk call the roll?
Commissioner Dodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner McKee?
Yes.
And Mayor Morse?
No.
Motion carries four to one.
Thank you, Jesse. The next item on the agenda is to, thank you for waiting this evening, by the way, is the Friends of Peace Memorial Auditorium, and we're going to be talking about the educational program kiosk presentation. And this requires no vote tonight, but it's informative for the commissioners to be updated and the public. So who'd like to speak this evening? Jim Sharp. All right, hi. And Tom Parrish? Yeah, hi.
I'm Jim Sharp. I live at 508 Wickham Road, and I'm chair of the Veterans Committee for Peace, Friends of Peace Memorial Auditorium. We have asked for time to you this evening. You ask us to give us an update occasionally, so this is the final phase of that project on the foyer wall. That includes the kiosk. It's the last phase. Last November, we completed the wall. We had a dedication at which all of you, most all of you attended. The 101 boys are named, names are on that granite wall, and we're ready to now also finish that project with the kiosk. Tonight, we have a sort of a management version, an overall look at what we're doing. We asked for 30 minutes, and we will hope to say that. We'd like to present it in 20, and then questions, but we'll stay until the questions are answered. This demo version is what is a sort of a complimentary support to what you see on the wall. And I know all you've seen, you've been to that wall and seen what we have there. This helps tell the story about Friends of Peace Memorial Auditorium, about Manhattan, about the 101 boys, and about those 2,610 who served. And it's been a labor of love, really, for about 20 or 30 people, some of who are...
I'm here.
Some are who in the audience here tonight that have been working on this project. Some of these researchers on this project have told me that they felt like, they've researched this project so much that they felt like they've actually come to know these 101 boys like a brother. So I think that's a wonderful project. So I think that's a wonderful project for them to be involved in, that they, that they found time to be a part of something that was larger than themselves, and I think we all need to do that occasionally, and without them, we wouldn't be here tonight. The people that spent our voluntary hours and hours on this project, and you'll see some of the evidence of that here in a few minutes. So we are, uh, all proud of this project, and we think the 101 boys who died for the cause would, uh, say the same thing if they were here. We got a rocky start on this project four years ago, when the commission voted to place offices in the, the basketball court and the stage and, and the balcony. And at that time, some of us started researching the history of what this really was, and we really, bottom line, found out that City Hall was really Peace Memorial Auditorium. A lot of us didn't know that, and so you, you eventually reversed that, and we come up with a, a plan to move ahead as Friends of Peace Memorial Auditorium in cooperation with the city, and I think that's been a win-win situation for all of us. And we want to thank you and the city staff who have been working with us on this project. The abbreviated versions you're going to see tonight is going to be available in the pub, public domain for anyone who has a computer and a browser. When we go live, it's going to be pretty simple for anyone to access this database, and we've already got it named. The name of it is going to be Peace Memorial Auditorium 101. Peace Memorial Auditorium 101.org. It's going to be available, and easily available to history classes, tourists, and anyone that has a, wonders what you can do in Manhattan, Kansas. You can come right over here and have a complete program on the east foyer. We've really available, only scratched the surface in what we can do with the technology that's available, but the veterans committee are recommending we do what we've said we were going to do, and test it out in a system test for 30, 60, or 90 days to see how it works before we make any other changes. We're not recommending any right now. So we're transitioning the kiosk, the database, and relating information to the city site, and work, we will work with the city site as, the city staff as necessary to see that is accomplished in a transparent manner. Once this transition is complete, we plan to begin publicizing and offering, uh, tours and programs to World War II veterans, to veterans groups, to schools, uh, and anybody else that's interested. And I would recommend also, and we'll, Tom will be talking about that in a little bit, about a walking tour right here in Manhattan in Riley County. I'd recommend that to anybody, it's, uh, it's very interesting, and we turned up, what, with, with the help of some of you, we turned up some historic sites and memorials that we didn't even know about. So in closing, what we thought was maybe the probably the most simplest process of this, well, probably, maybe I shouldn't even tell you the problems we've had, we're just moving right along here, but one of the simplest things that I thought we had to do was build a stand for a kiosk right out here in the foyer. And it just turned out to be a lot more complicated building that stand, some of these other problems that we've had, but anyway, uh, there's been quite a number of contractors that have been involved in that, and there's ADA regulation, there's other things involved, but anyway, they're working on it, and we're going to expect that to be done quite soon. And the veterans committee will continue to cooperate with the city, and if and when any major changes are necessary in the wall or their kiosks, we'd be glad to participate in that decision. So we could go on and on, but a picture is worth a thousand words, and so is the demo, and, uh, I want to, for now, introduce to you Tom Parrish, who's a guy that's, uh, grew up here in Manhattan, he now lives in Emporia, he's been a immense help to us in getting this project completed. He's going to, he's going to lead you through a demo here, and after that's through, we'll be glad to answer any of your questions. Well, Tom Parrish.
Well, thank you. Um, as Jim said, Tom Parrish, it's nice to meet you all again in some cases. Um, it's, as a local kid, um, you know, my dad taught at K-State since 75, and, I mean, I was born here in 77, and although I live in Emporia, and probably no matter where I lived, I mean, this would be my hometown. And, uh, anyway, when I learned of this project, which I knew of some of what was happening, but when I found out that I could actually participate in it and actually help to preserve these blind boys' memories, um, it was something that I really jumped at, and was willing to, uh, willing to, uh, you know, put some of my own energies, and, uh, I mean, I, anyway, was very much happy to be a part of it and honored to really work with Jim Sharp and, uh, the steering committee is just tremendous, uh, been a tremendous help and really great to work with. Um, but anyway, I think really what I'm going to do for you tonight is just kind of break down what the various parts of this website are and what they offer. Um, definitely, we can talk about the potentials for the site, um, but in terms of an educational tool or a way for somebody to present, whether in the foyer of the auditorium itself, or, I mean, this, I'm actually running this off of a thumb drive, um, it requires no internet at all, um, in order to run, there's no outside linking, anything like that, not a single thing on this that requires somebody to have an active internet connection, so somebody could go to, you know, someplace out in the country and give this out in the middle of the, wide open, and, uh, it would work just as well as it would in the foyer, so, um, now, it's limited in that way as well in terms of the expandability, I mean, it's kind of a closed system, but, uh, in terms of presentations and, and educational purposes, this really has everything that somebody might need. Um, and actually, I didn't even prepare a PowerPoint, because I think any question you guys can have, it's organized well enough, that I can just pop through it and find an answer or, you know, to, I mean, if there's somebody in particular you're looking for, or something about the memorial, um, it's all there, so, um, you know, a lot of this was, uh, basically just working with the committee and trying to figure out not only how to meet, and in the case of, you know, myself, I really wanted to exceed the goals of the committee, I wanted to offer something that was, uh, offered, I mean, expandability, just more information about these gentlemen than just a name, and maybe just a picture. In some cases, we haven't even found a picture on some of them, and the 2,610, there's just a ton left to find. Um, anyway, in terms of the, uh, just the front kind of splash page here, um, you know, it's just obviously something that's supposed to run kind of in a somber fashion in the foyer, and not be distracting, but enhancing, um, so, but anyway, you can either scroll to get to these feature stories, which we felt were, you know, just 12 of the, uh, veterans, uh, of the 101, who kind of exemplified the broader stories of many other, uh, vets that were on that list of the 101, um, in terms of where they served, uh, what branch they served in, and how they ultimately perished in the line of service. Um, there's some really exciting stories on here, I'd be happy to talk about some specifics, but I was, like Jim pointed out, I mean, it was, uh, it was a pleasure to learn about these people, I mean, really, as a kid, military history was one of the things I was the most kind of enthralled with, so, um, but anyhow, uh, so, you know, one of the first things was just a way to give people a look at the, uh, memorial itself, the history of it. Um, now, we kind of have the short and then the long version, but even the long version isn't, it doesn't require a lot of time for anybody, I'm sure there's a potential thesis that could be written on any one of these, uh, subjects for people. Um, but anyway, I've tried to make the navigation really friendly for the kiosk for a touchscreen. A few things kind of, in terms of a website, had to be sort of, I don't know, corny, I mean, just basically cutting, uh, or changing something that might work better on a website in order to make it work right on the kiosk. Um, but anyway, uh, the history of the Peace Memorial, it has a closer look at the individual elements, so whether somebody's in there, they're just talking about it, um, to a group, uh, you know, maybe in another space or in another town, uh, or if somebody's just looking at this at home on, on their own, um, you know, they can see how exactly, you know, what are the parts of this, what, what is their meaning? And also, uh, it has a gallery, uh, at this point, it's a fairly, uh, thin-down gallery, I think, and I think it's just a resolution here, that's more like I'm used to seeing it. Um, but anyway, this was just, uh, pictures that I had actually shot during the, uh, dedication of the memorial itself, and, and Kathy, uh... Dazzle, Dazzle Zinski? Sorry. Uh, anyway, um, but...
Right over my folder.
That's right. Well, yeah, it's probably standing right over Joel's folder. Um, but anyway, and a photo archive of historical pictures, and I, and it's my hope that all of this can be added to and continue to be expanded on, um, and in terms of a website, we're kind of figuring out how that might work, um, probably limited in the way it might be expanded on the kiosk itself. Um, really, at the heart of the whole thing is, is stories of those who served, um, and again, there's the featured bios, uh, that is highlighting those 12 service members, uh, really, one of them is more of a family of service members, uh, that, uh, all served during World War II. But, uh, anyway, it gives the list, uh, gives the, of the 101 and the 2,610, it gives the history of the 101, uh, how the list was actually, I mean, the current list was made and, and adjusted, um, given new information. Um, anyway, one of the things in terms of an educational, uh, piece is that, you know, these can, if you were to use this as a presentation tool, um, if you had certain things you wanted to talk about, that's why I was opening up tabs, uh, you could easily use this in a browser, and again, you don't need the internet to do that, um, but if you had something specific that you wanted to go into and, uh, you know, look at, you could have these kind of set up beforehand. Now, on the 101, we have really a bio for all but, like, one or two of those veterans. Now, extremely limited, this is the 2,610, um, let me get to the 101 here, which the 2,610, uh, it has the 101 included on it, obviously, um, and it has a handful of other veterans that we've been able to, um, find and, uh, create pages for their bios, but every one of these, uh, veterans, other than just one or two, um, you can, and I'll actually show you the people that I was, uh, the family, this is more of the Crompton Brothers, uh, who's a local family who, uh, were from the Ogden area, and, uh, they, I mean, as it describes, really, their family served in every conflict, I think, since, well, definitely well, since the Revolutionary War. Um, but five of them actually served in World War II, and two of them didn't make it home, two more would have served if the war would have kept going, and they actually served in the military the rest of their lives. Um, but anyway, this, this kind of gives an example of one of the bios that has a great deal of, uh, information in the bio, um, actually a written biography, uh, much of this was researched and, well, researched by Joel Meyerowitz, and, and, I guess, well, written by, uh, Brad Gelka. Um, but anyway, many others, which I can get back to the list here, don't have a lot of information. This person actually probably has a little more than most, um, but there's a lot of folks, uh, let me get back to the bio, or the list here again, um, let's see, that there might not be a picture for, so this is, this is just to kind of point out that there's still room for expanding this, and as this becomes live in the foyer and potentially, uh, definitely as a website, the hope is, is that more people will become aware and contribute to, um, kind of filling out this biographical information and supplying photos to make this an even richer and, uh, more valuable resource for the community. Um, anyway, there's a couple other sections in here that are really important, and, and really, in my mind, more the areas that offer expansion, uh, potential for the website itself, or this kiosk interactive as a website. Um, and that would be the other veterans category. I know that, uh, in the process of making the list, you know, it's kind of like people, there's so many veterans that have called Manhattan home over the years, uh, the kids of these veterans, the grandkids, might not see the name of their grandfather or their father, brother, whoever, on this list, and wonder why, um, and suggest for us to provide, you know, to put them on the list. And so instead of just saying no, which we've, you know, there's definitely kind of, uh, it wouldn't just be everybody, it wouldn't be a catch-all, but it provides us a way to honor them as well as, you know, in addition to the 2,610 and the 101. Um, and then, the last section here is the home front, which is one, it's one that's still being developed, there's a very nice story about the, um, just wartime Manhattan, um, you know, offers kind of a look at different aspects of, of the story of, uh, you know, what took place at home while the vets were fighting and, and, uh, the various theaters of the war. Um, on the left, these are actually kind of replacement, these are suggested types of stories that might be included in here. Um, and my thoughts there was just that this is the type of thing that offers the community just a, uh, more diverse paths to come to this as a place to research various topics, um, that enhance the story and tell a broader, uh, a better story of the, of the 101 and the 2,610, but Manhattan, kind of a time capsule for Manhattan in the 1930s and 40s. Um, the next sections are a little bit quicker, because they're, you know, again, this kind of covers a lot, just in the, those who serve section. Um, the Medal of Honor section, this is one of the goals, uh, and it, again, helps to tell a little bit broader story outside of the 101 and the 2,610, um, but there were six recipients, uh, of the Medal of Honor, uh, that had called Riley County home, and in this case, uh, much the same as the, uh, the 101 and those 12 featured bios, there's, on most of these, there's a good amount of information, at least biographical information, and a handful of photos, uh, with the exception of George Wallace, which is, I mean, for being a lieutenant colonel and having received the medal, we haven't been able to find a single image of him, um, which seems like something that should exist, but, uh, anyway, then there's also a section for learning about the history of the medal itself, um, which I encourage you guys, obviously, I can't take the time to, you know, kind of demonstrate all the material that's on here, but it's quite deep, and it could really, um, just be even deeper. Now, uh, the other memorials, we certainly wanted to highlight all the other memorials around Manhattan and Riley County more broadly, uh, as part of this, and it kind of gave it, um, a little bit more of a structure and kind of a meaning, was, uh, well, started with, uh, Winn Butler's idea with the creating a memorial walk, um, and I think whether it's associated with a Veterans Day, which is certainly a great time to do it, or just anytime you feel like taking a good walk, um, this section, uh, offers, I mean, kind of a guided tour. Uh, there's a map that you can go to, and, and you can actually zoom in on it. One of the things about creating this as a web, in a website-type form, is that, I mean, really, it looks fantastic on a cell phone, you can zoom into it, so if there's any material or anything that you can't read, like even here, um, you know, and on the kiosk itself, you could zoom into it if somebody was, you know, with, uh, any kind of, uh, sight impairment, um, they could zoom in, I mean, just with the same, uh, type of gestures you would on the iPad or anything else, any other touchscreens. Um, but anyway, you can learn a little bit more as you take that walk, um, and actually, these links kind of as a quick jump to those various stops on the walk. Um, this isn't quite as meaningful, I think, on this screen, because you can, you can read those even though they're small, you could zoom into it, but on a cell phone, it's great, because you can zoom clear into it, and there's plenty, um, resolution to be able to read the streets and, and know where you're at. Um, we did kind of consolidate some of the, uh, monuments that were pointed out, just to put them into one number, uh, just to kind of uncrowd some of these a little bit. Uh, but anyway, it's, it's actually, I think, a really, uh, great addition to the site, and it's, uh, it's like some of these other ones that I said could use a little expanding and, and just enhancing for web purposes for somebody to look at at home. Um, that's one of those that could get tied into Google Maps and, you know, and be potentially point out restaurants, and I don't know, anything else they might stop at along the way. Um, and then these last sections, um, special thanks, we've made a point of, um, giving thanks to all the people that have contributed and donated to, uh, help, you know, uh, make the Peace Memorial Auditorium renovation and the memorial itself a reality, and, and fund the website itself, or the, uh, interactive slash website itself. Um, and this is quite a long list, um, but, uh, and then, lastly, um, and this is one of these areas that in a web version, it would be really nice to have this tied into everything that it mentions, so you can go to those websites, but for now, it's just a list of local resources, regional resources, and national resources that somebody might, that might be available to somebody that they might have seen a name on that list that they, I don't know, they're curious to know more about, they want to help contribute some research of their own, um, and this is just kind of our attempt to make that a little easier, so I think that kind of does it, unless one of the committee members wants to point out anything, but, um, so, okay. Okay. And Kathy, you tell me.
Well, I should...
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I had my surgery last week, so that's, so I would need to zoom in.
Kathy Delwakowski?
Yes, Kathy Delwakowski, 100 South Delaware Avenue. I, I just wanted to comment that one of our goals for all of this project, not just the kiosk, but in renovating the auditorium, is that our community, as Jim mentioned, had kind of lost sight of the fact that it was a memorial auditorium and what it was a memorial for. And so one of our goals with this project was that when we created the memorial wall, we didn't want it just to be a list of names on a plaque, because that doesn't have any meaning to you in your daily life or as our community. We wanted people to remember who were these men and who were they in our community. And especially with World War II being over 70 years ago, it's, it's hard for us to know who were these men and how were they connected to the community. And so the kiosk provided us with the opportunity to create these profiles so that you can read more about these men and see, you know, um, one guy was a, an editor of the Collegian and, um, someone else was a fry cook at a cafe that everybody went to, and they all answered the call and did their part to serve our country. And, and then you find out who were these people, you know that they touched lives in this community, and that's why it was important after the war that our community built the auditorium. And so that's kind of the point, that we wanted to make sure that we don't forget again and remember who these people are.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Kathy.
I guess we're turning it over to you guys for questions at this point. I will say, just one other quick point. You know, because of the diligence of, uh, folks like Joel and Kathy and Barbara and Lyndon and Brad and everybody that's really contributed to this, there's not a better, there's no, there's no repository for all these people in one place, and now there is. You know, there's a database that's basically been created in conjunction with this, that the information is now, you know, in the possession of the Historical Society and, uh, and it will continue to be that way. Any updates, I'm sure they'll get an update of it. But the effort that it took to find the information on these gentlemen, I mean, you couldn't find it all, it was just impossible to find it all in place. It's ongoing. But now, if somebody was to want to find out something more about an uncle or a brother or, you know, or know if there's anything out there about them, instead of finding something on Find a Grave, and usually it's very small, little bit of information here and another little bit of information there, it's, I mean, this is just, you know, Riley County community members that are collected in one spot. So, I think it's probably pretty unique, um, in terms of even nationally. I doubt there's too many of that, this type of repository, so.
I just, I have a couple comments. So first and foremost, to the Friends group as a whole, this is the first time, um, you guys have been here since I've become a commissioner. So I just want to thank you for all of the work that you do. Somebody who's about two generations removed, obviously, from this, um, one of the stories, people always ask me why at 25 years old I decided I wanted to run for city commission. I was privileged enough to have a great grandmother that I only lost a couple of years ago that lived to be 104 years old, and I had a lot of family members that served in World War II, and she told me the stories, um, and she connected me with that history, and that's why at a young age I became really fascinated with history and government, and it's quite honestly the reason why I'm probably here where I am today. So, we lose a little bit of history every single day, so the fact that you guys have worked to capture these stories, I, I think's incredible. So I just wanted to thank you first off. Just a couple of comments, this is in by no way criticizing your work whatsoever, just little suggestions. So as someone who looks at websites a lot every day, you did an incredible job designing this, this is amazing, it's really great. Do you know how big the kiosk is going to be that this is displayed on?
The screen?
Yeah.
They're 32-inch screens, 20, I think they're 28 across, 32 diagonal.
The only thing that I would watch, and it could just be how responsive design is working on my...
It is.
But I, I just think those images are so amazing, so if the screen's too small, I would hope that much of that is above the fold as possible.
Right. It's actually tailored for that kiosk.
Beautiful.
And so it fits the kiosk outline without needing a bar or anything.
Got it.
It will never have the address bar on it. So that's one of the things that, you know, I took it as far as I could as a website that would be ready for publication, really.
Got it.
And it could be published this way, but that is one of the things that are not perfect in terms of a website.
Got it.
But it is in fact perfect for the kiosk.
I figured you'd probably already thought of it. The only other thing is, um, if you look at the Dwight D Eisenhower, um, library website, they have a, they do a veterans honor roll, and on that honor roll, it, they, in a very unique way, display a picture of the veteran, and then you click in on the picture and then that takes you to like the page that's about them.
You're saying kind of like a hover, uh...
Yeah, exactly. And so you might look to see, um, check that out, because it might be a, a really interesting way for you to present that kind of list, instead of it just being a list of names.
Right.
You know, do it with pictures, that someone, I don't know, Dwight D Eisenhower Museum, that, their library has one that I think's really unique, so just something you might look at.
Well, I could see, uh, I mean, that sounds interesting, certainly. You could make it so that the rollover, instead of bringing up a name or something like that, it actually could pop up the picture, um, but...
It's just a really, I feel like it was a, it's a really nice, interactive way.
Sure.
That kind of, it, it sucks you in to like see the picture of that person, so wanting to see their name and want to...
One issue is just the availability of images and the lack of resolution in some of these images. I mean, some of them...
Totally understand.
I mean, just wherever we're able to get it. Now, as stuff is forthcoming, I mean, I mean, I'm all for refining and, and that's part of, I think, where you guys might come into this picture, you know, is the idea of supporting kind of the, because I think this is a great public, I mean, just a publication on behalf of the City of Manhattan.
Yeah.
And enhances that space a great deal, but also offers all kinds of avenues for connectivity to the broader community websites and stuff. And so, you know, this can always be improved. I mean, there's a desire to do so, and, and, uh, we actually have, oh, why am I shooting? I have it so that on these lists, it goes to the, uh, it's just part of the navigation, didn't take it into consideration when I changed it, but I changed the donate now button on that homepage, or from a look at the memorial to donate now, the idea being that, you know, somebody that wants to contribute, in this case, it just gives them a, you know, uh, an address to send a check to.
Yeah.
But in terms of a website, plug it directly into PayPal. And, uh, I mean, I think it would lead to being able to kind of, you know, self-perpetuate the site a little bit and provide funding and to do things like enhancements like that.
You did great work, it's a beautiful, um, it's a beautiful piece, and I look forward to seeing the live version of it, and thank you to the broader group for everything that you guys do.
Yeah, I think you did excellent, excellent job on that. I talked with you a number of times, but, but the way I understand it, you've got the kiosk closed loop.
Right.
So that's basically set, and then the website you can manipulate and then update the kiosk if you choose to do so in the future.
That's the idea.
And the other beauty of it is, as you explained, you, you've made this thing so it works on mobile apps, and that's tough.
That is.
Because a website translating to a cell phone is, is a real bear, so, so you did some excellent technical work, and I want to commend you, commend you for that.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And I think the Chapman Center probably worked, hopefully worked on with you at this, and I can't, this makes it look like it's simple, but I know the countless numbers of hours even students had to put forth in it and just getting the historical, uh, information on it. So although making it look easy is actually, uh, a huge task, so...
That's definitely collaborative, for sure.
Yeah, but it took, um, many, many, many months and lots of hours to put it together, so thank you once again.
You're welcome.
I think we're all excited to see the final product, and we know the hours that a lot of you have put in. Joel, you, Myers, right, would you come up and talk a minute?
Just a minute?
You've been getting, you've been wanting some attention.
Just a minute?
Just a minute, that's all.
Oh, no.
Yep. I wondered, I know that you have been one of the researchers, I'm sure Barbara and others have done, at the museum have done it too, but I wondered about how many hours have you spent doing research on these, uh, veterans, one at a time?
Well...
Total.
Stop keeping count, didn't you?
Can you add that up?
Not really, yeah.
Lot of hours.
I always, uh, say in my mind, when I'm going to do research, first of all, my, my first goals are, I'm not going to be paid for it, because so many people in the past I've done work for, not work, but, uh, done genealogy for, they're always saying, "What do you want? How much you want?" And I'm always going, "I don't want nothing." And then finally, after so many requests, here years back, I said, "Okay, make me some peanut butter cookies." And that was great. I thought I was going to get some peanut butter cookies. I researched, I, I think it was, checked with the Vokian people, I don't know, but I did some research now, and I got it all together and gave it to my sister, and she worked at the hospital, and that's who wanted it, one of her cohorts, and... Life went on. On and on.
So how many hours?
And then pretty soon, somebody wanted some research on something else. My sister asked me, "What do you, yeah, okay, I did this."
We know how that happens.
And I said, "Peanut butter cookies." Just ask her for a dozen. And finally, on the third one, I figured it out. I happened to come up there to do something for my sister, and she was mid-bite on a peanut butter cookie with a plate there. And I said, "Where'd you get them peanut butter cookies?" And she said, "Uh..." And I figured it out. Every time I said I was going to get peanut butter cookies, she ate them all before I got them.
Got them, okay.
And so I said, "Okay, we ain't going to do it from where you work," or nothing like that, "I'm going to get them myself," because I only got one peanut butter cookie out of all that. But anyway, I never wanted something to, you know, no, no reward. I just wanted to do it because it was a reward in my head, you know? I've always been interested in history. Now, if you went to Manhattan High and you had Mr. Green, he's deceased now, but he was a big guy. He was Afro-American and he used to play for KU, I believe, and then got his knee blown out or whatever. Anyway, he's a good guy to have history with, because you didn't have to have history. All you had to do is say "football," and he'd start talking about football, and he'd, he'd just go off, and you never would have to study. But I loved history. And from then on, I did my thing, but history always came back to me. And I, I met this, well, tall gentleman, looks like Abe Lincoln.
So Joel, I just asked, really, how many hours have you been involved in the project?
I would say...
I can't remember.
Okay.
When it's a labor love, I don't think you tend to keep track of hours.
Okay, I just know that it's been a lot.
We're talking thousands and thousands and thousands.
I think so, I think so too. Well, listen, we're...
You did a good job, and we do, one thing we want to mention is, I don't know whether you can demonstrate it or not, Tom, but, uh, we are going to have a, a donate button on this machine.
Okay.
Uh, most, I think all of you have donated, your name's on there, but there are other people who haven't had an opportunity, and we have a lot of, like Joel and a lot of others, have given us in kind donations.
You bet.
And we can't tell you all the details about all of this tonight, or we'd be here all night. We just wanted to give you a management overview and let you know that this is going to be available.
There it is.
It's going to be easy to operate, and, uh, you can find out a lot more on, on the kiosk as soon as it's...
We thank you very much.
Okay.
Yes.
I did find that donate now button. Somehow it got switched to the live version.
I just wanted everybody to know.
It got switched to the web version, there must be a link in there.
Dave Fisher is our official fundraiser.
I know, Dave Fisher, here he comes.
Okay, here, David.
I just want to take just one quick opportunity to, again, thank all the members of the Friends of Peace Memorial Auditorium for all the wonderful work. I mean, this is phenomenal, I mean, I can't believe what all they've done. I also want to thank again the City of Manhattan and the city commissioners for all their foresight and support through this project. And I also want to remind the folks that are home, watching this on television, it's going to be a great thing for them to either get it on at home or get it, come down to Peace Memorial Auditorium, you can spend a lot of time going through this, believe me. And for all the people that have relatives around Manhattan, uh, new commissioner here, Jared, you said you have World War, you'd be amazed how many people in Manhattan have come up to us as members of the committee and say, "Well, I have people in World War II, I've got somebody, another veteran in another war." But people are really interested. And the final thing I would just say is, we're going to put that donation deal on there for people that are interested, but we also want to remind everybody that we're partnering, we are partners with the City of Manhattan, uh, for the funds that have gone into this project, and people from all over the community have donated, but there's still a lot of people that would like to donate and help us as we move forward on this project. So, uh, anytime anybody wants to help us out, we appreciate it, we are still raising funds to finish this total project, which includes the Veterans Memorial, the kiosk, and the big auditorium that we're getting ready to, to do that you've already approved a contract on. So thank you all very much for, again, for all your support.
Thank you, Dave. This has really turned into a very creative project, and more than anyone envisioned in the beginning, and to all your credit, and I know you've worked with the city staff, Jason Hilders, I think?
Yes.
And, is that pretty much? And, and, oh, Eddie Eastus, absolutely.
Bernie.
Parks and Re, and Bernie Hay.
And all, all kinds of people on the city staff.
There are lots of them, but I, uh, this was not something that, when you started out, that you necessarily envisioned, the, the richness of this website and the ability to connect with people all over the world, so thank you so much.
It's very interesting when you get a lot of people in the city, in the city and the citizens, all work together, it's amazing what you can get done.
Magic happens. Thank you. And unless there's other business, we're adjourned. Thank you.